Good afternoon. The time is now 4:00 PM where we start our Executive Committee Work Session. I... It is my pleasure to introduce our November Caddo Parish Student of the... Student Leader of the Month, Ms. Heaven. Please come to the podium. Welcome to the meeting, Ms... Tell me your... Pronounce your last name for me.
Cabrera.
Okay. Uh...I'm gonna now let you... I'm gonna turn it over to you sweetheart.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Good afternoon, President Green, Superintendent Burton, Board Members and Audience. My name is Heaven Cabrera and I am proud to be the November 2025 Caddo Parish Student Leader of the Month. I represent District 11 under the Leadership Board of Member Jessica Yates and I am currently a student at Walnut Hill Middle School. I come from a family that values hard work, perseverance, and compassion. Principals have guided me throughout my journey. My father's courageous battle with cancer and my role in supporting my younger brother who has autism has shaped me into who I am today. These experiences have taught me strength, empathy, and the importance of helping others. I am an active athlete, participating in softball, basketball, and track. Through sports, I have learned the importance of discipline, and resilience, and teamwork. Whether on the field or in the classroom, I always strive to give my best in uplifting those around me. Beyond athletics, I am deeply interested in psychology and law because I want to understand people better and advocate for the truth and justice. I also hope to travel the world, experience new cultures, and continue to... through learning and service. Every challenge I face has inspired me to work harder, dream bigger, and lead with kindness. I am proud of the young lady that I am becoming, driven, compassionate, and determined to make a difference. Thank you for this incredible honor for recognizing students who strive to create a positive change. At this time, I would like to turn it over to District 11 Representative Jessica Yates, who will lead the audience in invocation.
Please stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today. Guide our hearts and decisions as we work for the good of our students, staff, and schools. We ask each of you to lift up the Walnut Hill staff and students as they grieve the loss of a beloved teacher over the weekend. We ask you to surround them with comfort, strength, and peace. We also ask for prayers for our North Caddo School and community, as well as the Vivian Police Department, but most importantly, the Brock family, as they face this heartbreaking loss of an outstanding officer, mentor, and coach. Hold them close and carry them through their sorrow. Please bless this meeting and everyone here as we serve with compassion and wisdom. Amen.
Amen.
She's gonna introduce... She'll introduce students. Yeah, please remain standing, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Yates. Now, I would like to turn the mic over to Southern Field students Terrance, Christopher, Mary Williams, and Williams Caroline, who will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, President Green, the fourth, once again, yours for tonight's meeting. Thank you again for the opportunity to represent District 11 and serve as the November 2025 Caddo Parish Student Leader of the Month.[600.04][600.04](Applause).
At this time, it's time for roll call.
Executive Committee.
For the Executive Committee. Thank you, Mr.?
(Inaudible).
Present.
Jessica Yates.
Present.
Mary Tremell.
Present.
Please vote electronically.
After everyone votes, please show the vote and we will continue with the meeting. Alrighty, the vote has been shown. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Burton.
Thank you, President Green, and Board Members. Welcome to our November 18th Executive Committee Work Session. We have quite a number of presentations and recognitions, so at this time, I'd like to ask Mary Nashwood to introduce those for us.
Thank you, President Green, as well as Superintendent Burton, Board Members, Audience. We are so excited to kick off our November Board Meeting with none other than the... Been a treat for us from Southwood High School. Now, we got two things in store because my friends over there always like to bring it in full force. So, the Southwood High School Music and Performing Arts Department continues its proud tradition of excellence under the leadership of Mr. Holden. Now, in his 19th year as Department Chair and Director of Bands, I thought you were only 19.[728.51][728.51](Laughter). The Southwood Band Program has earned superior ratings at LMEA District and State Competitions for the past 17 years. This past April, the Southwood Symphonic Winds represented the school at the Orlando Fest National Competition in Orlando, Florida, where they were named Grand Champions. The Southwood Jazz Ensemble, an all-volunteer group that rehearses after school, will feature Senior Band President Jada Powell as today's lead vocalist, performing "Sweet Love" by Anita Baker. I'll then come back for the second part of that if it sounds good.
(Inaudible).
I had a little pivot. They decided to switch it up on me. You wanted to see how good I could read, right, Mr. Holden? We're gonna keep on reading then. The Southwood High School Concert Choir, under the direction of Mr. Anthony Cheatham, has experienced a remarkable revival. Now, in its 10th... His 10th year in education and second year as Southwood's full-time choral director, Mr. Cheatham has rebuilt the choir from just 11 students to a thriving ensemble of 33. His dedication and passion for choral music continues to inspire a new generation of student musicians. This afternoon, the choir will perform the spiritual "Come Here Jesus If You Please" by Roland M. Carter.
(Music). 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 (Music).
Now wait... Now wait a minute. Now wait a minute. Did you say Gremlin State University? Test, test. (Applause).
Our mic's on, we're talking.
As they pop up, want to just say one more time.
Mary.
Hold on.
Yes.
I told you Southwood has the best band.
I know.
They good.
No.
Look at him, look at him, that's it.
Mic, mic check, mic. Test, test. Mic check.
Testing, one, two, three.
Yours is that working?
It's... Hold on, hold on.
Mic check, man, that was awesome. I don't know if... They sounded almost like Gremlin State University or something in here. Good job, I am so proud of you, Southwood. Mr. Anthony Cheatham, Mr. Leonard Holden, great job, great job. Y'all see why I want the money to go towards the music programs?
I have a...
Hey, man, we're so proud of you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you, as always. Thank you. You know I love you.
Y'all, let's give them one more hand while they're getting out of here. Thank y'all so much.
You got it.
Anytime you got Ms. Bell with a bad knee rocking and shaking, then you know they've done a great job.
Thank you again, Mr. Holden. President Green, Superintendent Burton, is it okay to continue on with program?
Yes, yes.
We... I know we've had... Set a high bar with Southwood, but I think we can meet it, so come on over. Let's... Let's meet some more incredible people from across the district. Also, although this isn't a course, look how fast they disassembled all that, my goodness. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burton, thank you, President Green. Okay, so you've already met this individual, but feel like you need another shot to get to see her, just 'cause she's that awesome. Heaven, could you come on up? Heaven Cabrera, our Student Leader of the Month.[1424.12][1424.12](Applause). As she comes up, I do also want to invite someone else that doesn't know this is happening, but Lynette Hampton, if you're in the room, as I thought I saw you, come on. I say this because, yes. Ms. Hampton serves as the incredible principal of Walnut Hill Elementary Middle, and whenever Mr. Burton was meeting with Heaven, she said she wanted Ms. Hampton by her side, so we're gonna make it happen, 'cause she's Student Leader, so we're gonna do what she wants.[1452.33][1452.33](Applause). So, a little bit about Heaven. She's a passionate and resilient student whose life experiences have shaped her into a determined and empathetic young leader. She's raised in a family that values hard work and perseverance, and was deeply impacted by her father's battle with cancer and her role in supporting her younger brother with autism. These experiences have fueled her drive to succeed and help others. She's also an active athlete in softball, we talked quite a bit about that, as well as basketball and track. She loves to balance her love of sports with a deep curiosity about the human mind and wanting to be able to support others. She's especially interested in psychology and law, aspiring to understand people better and advocate for both truth and justice. Heaven is also eager to explore the world, embrace new cultures, and challenge herself through learning. Her journey reflects strength, growth, and a commitment to making a positive impact. That is not only true for students of Walnut Hill, what we hope for, but Caddo Parish, so thank you, Heaven, for being our Student Leader of the Month.[1512.33][1512.33](Applause). It's her birthday?
And, and Heaven, happy birthday.
Happy birthday! Come on![1522.12][1522.12](Applause). That's a nice surprise. Okay, so, Mr. Burton, I brought you a little bit from Southwood, we brought a little bit from Walnut Hill, but I gotta take it to a national level now, okay? So, how about we talk about some National Merit semifinalists? Caddo Parish once again tops the region with the largest number of National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, highlighting this district's ongoing commitment to excellence. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced the 71st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. These academically talented seniors now have the chance to compete for nearly $26 million in scholarships. To advance from a semifinalist to a finalist, which we know they're gonna do, guys, students must submit detailed scholarship applications, including their academic record, leadership activities, honors and awards, and essays. All 13 Caddo semifinalists currently attend Caddo Parish Magnet High School, so let's meet them. Cruz Baldarres, come on up.[1585.58][1585.58](Applause). I looked a long way. No, I'm just... Perfect, yes. Let's do one shot. Ezekiel, we're gonna give you a minute, come on. Ivy Joseph.[1634.46][1634.46](Applause). I was just about to say, I thought I saw your dad over here when Southwood was starting. Hey, he's multifaceted, come on, Dad. Student of the Year for Caddo Magnet High School, Nathan Tatum.[1665.74][1665.74](Applause). Maya Tratchell.[1673.33][1673.33](Applause). Welcome back.
And everybody, we will have a big group photo in just a minute, so don't want you to...
As they take... Get everybody assembled and ready. Um...
Over here.
Okay.
Front row, you wanna come stand right here on this second step, and then our second row to stand on this...
Front row, on the bottom. Next to the rest of the group. Front row on the bottom. There you go. You can... We got one, come to the front. Thank you. Let me get you ready. Y'all make this one good.
They do make us look very good.
Alright. There you go.
Smile for all the cameras, see how famous you are?
Alright, here we go.
Alright, now this is the official ones. I'll do this one.
Alright, there we go, we're good. Ready? One, two. One, two.
Now, you all turn and wave to the board members. Thank you, I'm very proud of you.[1765.12][1765.12](Applause).
I also...
We also have you.
Yes.[1769.12][1769.12](Applause). We also want to take a moment to recognize Principal Amanda Dolph. Yes. See? She's trying to get out of the spotlight.[1783.51][1783.51](Applause). But, we do just want to take a moment. Whenever you look at this, yes, 13... Yes. See? She's trying to get out of the spotlight. But, we do just want to take a moment. Whenever you look at this, yes, 13 is incredible, but I want you to know, we do this year after year, when other schools and other surrounding districts are excited to get one. That is because of the exceptional students in this district, and the teachers, and staff, and parents, so we want to just thank all of you for what you do to pour into these students. We know you're gonna show us, make us proud. Now we're gonna take a little journey over to the swamp, how about that? We are thrilled to present the 2025 Secondary Art Teacher of the Year Award to Aubrey Garcia, in recognition of her outstanding dedication, leadership, and achievement in secondary-level art education. Aubrey Garcia, come on down, friend. As an active member of the Louisiana Art Education Association, Aubrey has gone above and beyond to foster creativity, nurture young artists, and promote the visual arts within our schools and community. In this role, Aubrey has developed a vibrant and inclusive art program at the secondary level, demonstrated leadership in professional development and mentoring, served as a committed advocate for the visual arts, and inspired students to discover and express their creative voice. Please join us in Aubrey, and, bleh, got tongue tied there, my friend. Please join us in honoring Aubrey Garcia, congratulations, friend. We have a new one for you, Mr. Burton. So, we've gone from Walnut Hill, Southwood, Magnet High, the swamp, we're gonna go into the land of the Falcons with a little twist with it. So, you've met this individual before, but we're coming back again, because he continues to showcase what it means to be Caddo. Tonight, we are proud to recognize an extraordinary achievement by one of our Caddo Career and Technology Center students. Landon Tipton is an 11th grade student at Northwood High School. He's made history as the first student from the Caddo Career Center to pass all 10 Automotive Service Excellence Automobile exams, and all four Collision Repair and Refinishing Exams. Come on. And yes, I said and, so let's go through what he's accomplished. To give you context on the magnitude of this, the ASE Automobile Exams Landon has completed include: Automatic Transmission and Transaxle, Automobile Service Technology, Brakes, Electrical and Electronic Systems, Engine Performance, Engine Repair, Heating and Air Conditioning, I can't even say half of these, why you even work them? Maintenance and Light Repair, Manual Drive Train and Axles, Suspension and Steering, and then he decided to go in for Collision Repair, doing Mechanical and Electrical, Non-Structural Analysis and Damage Repair, Painting and Refinishing, and Structural Analysis and Damage Repair. And I'll remind you, he's a junior. Yes. As Landon makes his way around, we want to give one more round of applause for him and all he's done to showcase Caddo. Mr. Burton, I think you can.
The valedictorian of workforce development right there. That's him, right there, absolutely.
At this time, Mr. Burton, President Green, you guys can go back to your seats. We'll continue on with one presentation. Okay, I'm gonna ask for it again, one more round of applause for Landon. Well, it is her birthday, too. Make sure she goes around, one more time, wish her a happy birthday. Okay, so as Heaven goes around, I'm gonna introduce our next presentation. Each year, we have been so excited to partner for the Stuff the Bus program. This evening, we are pleased to welcome our partners from Sportran, that's Candace Bradford, as well as Yolanda Jones, who are joining us as we prepare to launch one of the most meaningful community campaigns for the holiday season, and that's that annual Stuff the Bus campaign I mentioned. Each year, Sportran and Healthy Blue team up with Caddo to collect toys for students who are experiencing homelessness. This initiative brings together our schools, staff, community members, all with the shared goal of providing a bright Christmas for our homeless population. Sportran has been an incredible partner in this work, providing the buses, manpower, and the heart behind this campaign. Their commitment has made it an incredibly bright spot in a sometimes difficult season for those experiencing homelessness. Tonight, we're grateful to have Ms. Candace and Yolanda come on, to be able to kick off this year's campaign. We also want to have Dr. Norsha Lacy, who oversees our McKinney Vento program, come on up, as this is such a labor of love for everyone involved. Please join me in welcoming our team as we kick off Stuff the Bus for this year.
Good afternoon, everyone. Superintendent Burton, school board members, and all that are assembled. My name is Candace Bradford, I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications for Sportran, and we will officially kick off Stuff the Bus 2025 on tomorrow morning. 9:30 a.m., we're inviting everyone out, all the community who is available, to come out to Sportran Intermodal Terminal, 1237 Murphy Street, where we will officially unveil our festive wrapped Stuff the Bus wrapped bus that will be touring all throughout Shreveport. I'll let Ms. Yolanda share some of the stops, where we'll be at, but we're asking the community to come out and support us in this initiative and help us stuff the bus from front to back, top to bottom, so that when we deliver these toys for these kids, they can wake up Christmas morning with smiles on their faces, as they deserve.
Good afternoon, good evening. I just want to let you know that we are so thankful and blessed to have this opportunity to come today and share with you that the love we have for the community, the kids, we want to make sure the kids are happy when they wake up for Christmas. We want them to be happy as well. So, we are touring right now, we're starting, tomorrow is the press conference, so the kickoff will be Friday, the 21st. We will start at the Blanchard Walmart. We will be touring Five Below, East Gate Shopping Center, Walmart, Burt Koons. We have church communities involved, Pleasant Hill, Galilee Baptist Church, Peaceful Rest, um, what is it? Paradise Baptist Church, I mean, we're gonna, and Word of God Ministries, both locations, Bossier and Shreveport. And we want you to come out and be supporters. We want to make sure that kids are smiles on their faces for Christmas. Thank you.
This year, we're so excited to have 12 schools that have decided to partner with us to be able to stuff the bus. So, over the first week, December 1st through the 5th, the bus will be visiting Caddo schools, so they've already been in the process of collecting toys. They will receive those toys to be able to distribute later in the month. Additionally, board members and community members, we're so excited, this is the first year, and I want to call it Candace's brainchild, that you'll have bins at various sites. So, at Central Office, when you walk out in the lobby as of today, we'll have bins to be able to collect toys for those that are in our Stuff the Bus campaign. Has some great material there to tell a little bit about what we're doing, but it allows everyone and every aspect to be able to give. So, an incredible initiative, and my Dr. Lacy is not gonna say this and boast in any way.
To President Green, Mr. Burton, and the board, I just want to publicly thank Sportran for their partnership. The work of McKinney Vento is a work of heart, I say that all the time, and we cannot do what we do without the support of our community. So, I just want to publicly thank the community for pouring into the lives of these homeless children, so that they can have a wonderful Christmas. Thank you.
And I will say for this, we're looking at approximately 1,300 kids experiencing homelessness, so the need is great. So, we are asking everyone to be able to partner with us to make a sizable difference for Christmas this holiday season. One of the often overlooked sides of this is that is not just our elementary babies, that is also our middle and high school students. So, please, those that seek to be able to make a difference, this is an impactful way, and we are so thankful for the partnership with you all. I do also want to take a moment before I turn it over to Ms. Bell to just publicly thank Candace and Yolanda, who've been working with us tirelessly through this, thank you for all you do. But before we, we let this go, we said that Caddo Schools Week was December 1st through the 5th. You have to finish with a bang, and what better way to do that than with Party with a Purpose, with, with Bell? So, Ms. Bell, if, Ms. Green, if you don't mind letting Ms. Bell talk for a moment, we're gonna talk a little bit about Party with a Purpose that will also feature the Sportran Stuff the Bus. Ms. Bell, do you want to take this one? It's not.
Okay. First, now you can hear me, I know. First, I'd like to say this, and, and y'all know, three weeks ago, I was all on the TV, asking the community to help, to help take care of two students that we lost. And I want to say public to you, the community, to the board, to everybody in this community, you came out, and you showed that this community is great. I don't care what nobody say. Everybody came out, and as I said, those angels. I never want to go through, have to do something like that to try to bury two babies that didn't ask to be done like that. But I want you to understand, and I want the board to thank you, I want the community, and everybody. Those were some angels, and I'm gonna thank Winfield Funeral Home, because when I said that, they didn't ask, they was angels. And as a man came, they was viewing the body that day, and as a man came in, he said, "Ms. Bell, you said angels, these are chocolate angel dolls." And when the, the fire chief told me, when, when they was in the hospital, they were swollen from their head to their toe. And when you look at them that Friday in that casket, it wasn't nothing but angels. God is good, so I just want to thank each and every one of you in all the community for coming out. I'll tell you one thing, we said, "Send them to heaven," those angels are right there with the Lord. Thank y'all again, okay? Now, okay. Okay, now I'm going to talk Part of the Purpose. You right, you know, I love a party. And what more than do have a part of the purpose? Those three ladies over there, and Dr. Lacy. 13 years ago, me and one of my friends decided that we would do something for the baby, the homeless babies. Let me tell you, I taught fourth grade, and I taught myself, I said, "Look, we're going to write a paragraph about what you got for Christmas. Write a paragraph, and ask, and when you do it, describe everything, and let the students ask you questions." When that young man described his bicycle, the other baby, I would never get that baby looking at him, and he kept asking, he said, "What color, what did you have on it?" I wish I could have had one. Found out this baby had eight sisters and brothers, and he did not get a, he wanted a bike. That's when I told my friend, the Beta Palms, I said, "We're going to raise money and buy gifts for those homeless babies that they are there." So, and we started that, and now it's 13 years later. And right now, we do a Part of the Purpose, and Sportran called me about three or four years ago, right, Mary? And said, "We want to partner with you." I said, "But you know, I'm gonna do it with a party." So, on the 5th, in Samstown, I went to Samstown, I didn't have no money, paid for no room in Samstown to have a party. Talked to them, he said, "Ms. Bell, we'll do it free for you, come here." So, on the 5th, December the 5th, we will have a Part of the Purpose. The purpose is to what? Bring a toy, or bring a bike. I'm gonna tell you now what the children asked. Dr. Lacy went, before Dr. Lacy got to be over, that we asked the lady who was over, Petri, and she would go to East School and ask those babies quietly, not revealing their names to anybody, "What do you want?" Most of them said, "What? Tri-cycles and bicycles." So, that's when we started. So, I'm asking you, meet us at Samstown, it's adult party, no children, okay? Bring me a gift, it could be a toy. Bring $10. That $10 go to the scholarship. We presented a scholarship to one of our homeless students two years ago, and he's a junior at Jackson State. That's what, and the way they selected, that's right. Last year, with the Panellene Council also partnered with me, we gave three homeless students scholarship. One baby, mother had passed away, the grandmother passed away, then one of them, the young man, mother was homeless, he was homeless. Those babies wanted, and I think Dr. Lacy, them select the person, they have to write a letter to say, "Why, I receive, I want that scholarship." So, this is what the $10 is for. So, when you bring the toy, bring the $10. If you decide not to bring a toy, bring me $30. $20 to buy the toy, and $10 for the scholarship. Come and have some fun with us, I have some flyers, and can I pass them out real quick? Some flyers, meet me where?
Samstown.
And, oh, the bus will be there at Samstown that morning, at Samstown.
The road will be there right after we pick up at the Tuesday.
That's right, then they coming. And last year, I'm gonna tell y'all this. Them people's coming out of casino, and they was what? They was giving money. And then they, so look, so they'll be there all day to 12 o'clock that night. So, thank you, so I just want y'all to make sure, this is all part of Caddo Parish, taking care of our was what? Babies. Just like we did with our other two little homeless angels. This is what we all about, thank you.
Now, Ms. Bell, you know you won't say anything for announcements and requests, right? You took your time. Alrighty.
Mary, would you mind taking that? We'll have staff, yeah, we'll have staff take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
That's the end of our presentations and recognitions.
Thank you. At this time, we will now have our committee meeting report for the month of November. Our first committee meeting report will be from Building and Grounds and Security Committee that was held. Well, I'll give them time to get out. Thank y'all for coming. If you would like, you can come to the front, they are not reserved anymore. Our presentations and recognition is over, so you can come to, as close to the front as you'd like. Come on up, Ms. Rosie, I see you. Okay, we will now have our committee meeting report for the month of November. Our committee chair, Mr. Don Little, with Building and Grounds, that was held on November 5th.
Thank you, Madam President, and if it pleases the board, I'd like to present what we discussed in our meeting. We had four items on the agenda. Number one was a presentation by Keith Burton, these were Caddo priority areas. Number two were facility enhancements. This presentation was done by Mr. Patrick Greer. Also, property updates, and related to that was the listing agent's report by our Realtor, Lauren Brightwell. There were two recommendations that were adopted by the committee and forwarded to the board for consideration. The first recommendation was that the committee moves that the Building, Grounds, and Security Committee recommends to the Caddo Parish School Board at its November 18th, 2025 meeting to formally initiate price negotiations for the property owned by Louisiana Tech University, which includes the current site where Caddo Virtual. which includes the current site where Caddo Virtual Academy is located, and additional frontage property owned by the Shreveport Chamber of Commerce or others. That was unanimously adopted. The second recommendation was that we approve staff to accept the purchase offer of the Pine Valley Elementary property in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. That was also duly seconded, I mean, moved and seconded and forwarded unanimously by the committee. I'll entertain any questions, for sure.
No, not at this time.
Or not?
Our next committee report is Ms. Bell with the Policy Review Committee. That was held on November 11th at nine AM.
It's on there now, okay. The Policy Review Committee meeting was nine o'clock Tuesday, November 11th. We discuss the Caddo Parish Policy EFAB, Employees' Use of Social Media. And we, the employees shall not, the move to recommend to the Caddo Parish School Board to follow revision to the policy. Employees shall not post or share content that support, incite, or glorify unlawful violence, a threat, or harm toward individual, a group that has a tendency to disrupt workplace efficiently, undermine public trust, and oppose a reasonable risk or harm to other. This is what the committee recommended. Employees shall not post or share content that support, incite, or glorify unlawful violence or threat of harms to any individual group that has a tendency to disrupt workplace efficiently, undermine public trust, and oppose a reasonable risk or harm to the other. Motion was by Katie McLean, seconded by Jessica Leitz, and the motion was moved. Any questions in discussion?
Okay. Our next committee report was by Mr. Jerry Bowman for Insurance and Finance Committee. That was held also on November 11th at ten AM. I think it was a little later than ten AM because it ran over, but anyway, go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, the Insurance and Finance Committee meeting was November 11th at ten AM. I can't say that, I tell you, this is going to come up later anyway, so I like to defer my update. As the information will be reported in the meeting.
Okay, no problem. That's fine with me. Okay. So at this time, we're now down to... Give me just a second. Communication from citizens regarding pending agenda items. So at this time, I will read. The Caddo Parish School Board welcomes your input and comments regarding items that are subject of the upcoming board meeting. If you would like to speak regarding an item that is the subject of the upcoming board meeting, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, then make your remarks to the entire board. You do not need to fill out a card. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. A time clock on the monitor screens will help you be aware of your time. When the time runs out, your time is up. It is the board's policy not to respond individually to members of the audience. When appropriate, the board may refer concerns to staff to be addressed. As this is a public meeting, we ask that you refrain from referring to personnel by name or incident. In accordance with the school board policy, derogatory statements about or directed at a school board member, any employee, or any other person shall not be allowed. Thank you. Reminder, when organizations come to the podium to speak, you will be able to get five minutes. Thank you. Anybody that would like to speak, you can start kind of coming forward.
My name is Aubrey Garcia, 736 Aiken Drive, Caddo, 71107. Speaking as a representative of the Caddo Association of Educators Union. Speaking as a union member and a current leader, teacher. Good evening, board members, and thank you in advance for your time. I stand before you not just as a union representative and award-winning teacher, but as an advocate for every committed employee and respected retiree in this district. We are here to talk about a simple but profound principle. Investment, not increased burden. Caddo educators have not received a permanent cost of living raise since 2017. Let that sink in. Eight years of stagnant permanent pay to go along with the rising cost of living and governmental inflation. Now, we're being asked by our employers to absorb another proposed seven and a half percent increase in health insurance premiums after we just had a seven and a half percent increase last year. Let me translate that percentage into reality. For an employee with a PPO plan, that's up to seventeen ninety per month, or two hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents a year, just for employee-only coverage. For an employee covering a family like myself, the increase is fifty-three dollars and seventy cents per month, or over six hundred and forty-four dollars a year. Let's be clear. Another increase in our retire, in our required contributions, especially one this significant, is nothing less than a permanent pay cut. We appreciate the state and local stipends, but a stipend cannot pay a bill every month for the rest of our careers. Not to mention the hundred and thirty dollar increase in emergency room co-pays going from a hundred and twenty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars proposed. That is a barrier to care. It forces a parent to hesitate before taking a sick child to the hospital. Also, let's not forget that adding a new hundred dollar co-pay for specialty medications when there isn't previously one. You're not just increasing a number, you're increasing the stress and risk for every employee. We're also deeply concerned about the proposed changes to the health insurance for our future retirees. The vague language insinuates that after a lifetime of service, the board is cutting its financial commitment to those who earn their benefits. Every active employee hears this message clearly. Your dedication today will be met with a required, non-negotiable insurance change tomorrow. We respect the need for financial stability, but we must protect the promises we made to our veterans. Those employees dedicated their lives to Caddo Parish. The implication that they will be pushed off their current plan and onto Medicare at a specific age or retirement date is seen as a betrayal of trust. We ask the board to clarify this policy immediately, as the vague language also suggests that current employees who turn sixty-five may be subject to this as well. A financially stable district does not balance its budget on the back of its most loyal employees. This is a retention and recruitment crisis. The board's own financial rating was revived to a positive outlook by the S&amp;P Global Ratings based on strong budgetary performance and very strong reserves. The district is financially stable. We know that a five percent permanent raise would cost the district approximately twelve point five million dollars annually. The funds exist and the need is undeniable. We are losing talent to neighboring parishes that offer competitive compensation. We're struggling to retain experienced teachers who cannot afford to stay. Every year, we're in competition with these parishes. We know Bojor is offering pay raises to its staff. When a new teacher is looking at Caddo, what do they see? Stagnant permanent pay raise, rising premiums, and a hostile policy towards their future as a retiree. How can we continue to attract the best educators if we are making a clear statement that we value cost-saving over competitive compensation? The time for one-time stipends is over. The time for permanent pay cuts disguised as a benefit adjustment must end. We demand a permanent substantial pay increase, and we demand respect for our retirees. We are the professionals who are educating your children. We need you to invest in us. We need you to show that you value us for our service. We're urging you, board, to vote no on these, no on these health insurance increases, and please open the discussion for a raise for Caddo educators. We've earned it and we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, you know, you were on behalf of CAE, right? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Linda Thomas. I live at 5054 Town North Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana. And today, I would like to express about the insurance is high because I'm under the cancer doctor, and I have to go there every six months for treatment. And half the time, I can't pay for my medicine. And I would like to express my dissatisfaction with my pay, which is only six hundred and eighty dollars every two weeks. It makes me difficult for me to me and me. Sometime, I have to go to David Rain Community Center to get some assistance, help sometime with my bills. And I'm not ashamed at all. And I've been working for the school board ever since nineteen ninety-seven, but I got hired in two thousand and four by Monica Jenkins Moore. I really love my job. If I wouldn't be him, and I'm asking everybody that is, I can't afford my bills sometime. And six hundred and eighty dollars every two weeks. It's just like I was back on welfare, which I was there before. And, Lord, thank y'all for listening to me because I've been had cancer, two thousand and fourteen and seventeen, breast cancer. And I had to take thirty-two radiation. And I came to work every day, and I never gave up. And, Lord, thank everybody. We need this raise to help us manage our bills. Thank y'all. And I want to let y'all know that we have different schools and different parishes that are got, they pay is higher than Bojor and Desolat Parish, and I got a list that I want to give around to everybody so they can see the parish with twenty-two years, living off of six hundred and eighty dollars every two weeks. I don't think nobody on that board can live like this. If you can, let me know. Because I know what welfare and food stamp about, because I've been there. Thank y'all. And I want to pass this round to all of y'all.
If you don't mind, you can hand it to Mr. Ambling here, and he'll make sure we get it. Next person can come on up.
I was leaving with something. It was reserved for me anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am Mary Beth James, 5913 Yarborough Road, Shreveport, 71119. I am a retired bus driver. And I came once before, a couple of years ago, I think, on a similar subject. Caddo Parish drafted contracts for employees to sign. Employees had no input on these contracts. Caddo Parish drafted these contracts that stated thus and so, and thus and so, and this is what we will do for you, which included our insurance coverage. We signed that contract in good faith. And as much as possible, lived up to our end of the contract. I seldom took off. And when I say I, I know there are many others as well. I went three straight years without taking a single day. It would have been four, except for cataract surgery. So I had to take off too at that time. Nevertheless, we come to the subject of our insurance. I do have the question, why are the retirees having to take such a big hit? Many of them, like this poor lady, may not be blessed with another income or any other form. But let's just imagine. I don't know who all this covers, but I think I'll get up in the morning and find out I have stage-three cancer. I think I'll get up in the morning and find out my heart isn't what it used to be. I think I'll get up in the morning and my back hurts so bad sometimes that some medication won't even touch it. I might, I think I'll get up in the morning and find out that my loved one may have to have open-heart surgery. So there goes that second income. Said no one ever. We have some retirees up here. I pray that that never happens to anyone. And I just thank you for your consideration in this matter. And, you know, we drove buses that would barely get out of the parking lot, let alone go pick up kids. Spent hours at the garage that we didn't get paid for. Spent hours on the side of the road waiting for buses to come pick us and our children up. That's just an example of what bus drivers did and do, that most people don't know about. And we love our babies. I have one that I started picking up, and he's three years old, he's twenty-two, and he still calls me on my birthday. So, you know, they're special to us. What we did and what those still do means a lot to us. And I'm grateful for every second that I was able to do that.
Thank you.
But I do like my insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person can come on up.
Hello, I'm Deborah Hunter. I live at 6615 Blanchard Lake Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I'm here to talk about the insurance and how it's going to affect retirees and people who have been dedicated to working in the school system for fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. You know, I met a lady the other day, she was, had been in the school system, she said, for sixty years. And, and she depended on her insurance. I depend on the insurance. And I, and I hope that you understand that retirees are those individuals that have been faithful to your system, day in and day out, educating and serving your children in this school district, need quality insurance. And we don't need a restrictive-type policy. Medicare Advantage programs, they just limit access, they limit, you know, quality service. And we were promised choice. We were promised quality healthcare. Also, I would like to, you know, mention the salary. An individual can barely pay their bills on what they're paid. Paras, I mean, they're struggling. And we need a pay raise, and we need to have quality healthcare with reasonable premiums. And we need not to throw our retirees and our future retirees under the bus for a few pennies when there's other ways that we could try to conserve and cut the budget besides going after employees and retirees with their benefits. You know, I mean, they, we've chosen to work in the school system instead of the private sector. You know, so please consider what you're proposing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person can come on up. Now, before you speak, who all in my, how many more do I have to speak? Okay. Hold those hands up for me one more time. Now, come over to this front row. If you're speaking, go ahead and come up to the front row. Thank you so much. Go ahead and continue, ma'am, I apologize about that.
Got to get organized. Classroom management, Ms. Green. Erin Berry, 957 Audubon Place, Shreveport. I'm gonna try to do this without notes and without much sleep and too much caffeine and not enough water. I don't wear this lovely apron all the time. I just haven't been home. Been out and about at school since six twenty AM this morning. Haven't had time to do my homework, teachers. I read the first couple pages of the committee report, and the thing that stood out was we're having this problem because of chronic conditions. We live in Louisiana, I know we're predisposed to many of those chronic conditions because of our culture, but teaching creates some of those chronic conditions. We have a stressful workplace. We give all. I mean, the bus driver testimony, and thank you, Bree, for very detailed testimony on the numbers. Again, I didn't do all my homework, teachers, but when I saw that, I felt like I had to come and speak. I'm about five years from retirement. I'm about five years from retirement. I have seen this cycle happen before when I've been in the system of retirees being asked to shoulder a burden when they're on a fixed income and the they is about to become me. So it's a bit of a selfish testimony, but our profession causes some of these conditions. Some of them can't be avoided. We have to be monitoring the students all the time. We can't take a bathroom break whenever we want or need to. Some of the stress could be reduced. I think with, you know, you know, we're all educated, observant people here. I don't have to spell that out for you. But it just hurt my heart when I saw that on the first page that, of course, we have those chronic conditions and we probably have them at a higher rate than people in other professions. And that's all I really wanted to tell you. Thank you for letting me give you that without notes and with not much sleep or water. So, thank you.
Jacqueline Miller, 6207 Nuttaway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. To Mr. Burton and the board, I come, well, you know, I don't know if this is a mute point, but Ms. Omari Hussein has really done her due diligence about the public hearing that has been voided for many of our parents, for the closing schools where they will not...
Hold on just a second, Ms. Miller. Ms., Mr. Abrams, is this on our executive meeting? Okay.
I can't talk about...
You may not speak about that. It has to be on this agenda.
Oh.
You can speak during, yes, ma'am. You can speak during regular meeting, but...
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Alrighty. So the next person who can come up that's speaking about?
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Superintendent John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, 71118. I rise to speak to the insurance debacle we are about to meet. When I sat through the presentation, definitely was concerned about being forced to take an advantage plan is what seems to be a part of the recommendation of the superintendent. And though there were these testimonies in this packet that I have here, those persons who gave their testimony, I'm pretty sure they're probably pretty well financially stable. For me, one who had a five-figure salary versus a six-figure salary, and that salary was not that great in proportion, but that's neither here nor there. But what is here is that not more than two years ago, you all took $16.5 million out of that insurance reserve fund to give employees a $2,000 stipend. Surely you had to know that weakened that fund. But then you came right back and put a 7.5% premium increase on the retirees and the employees, regular employees alike. Now, I know a lot of you probably don't care anything about people that live on a fixed income because that's a personal thing. But it's more personal to those of us who may not get that cost of living increase or adjustment. And then we have to go and manipulate and maneuver how we're going to manage yet another 7.5% increase. Two years already, you've gotten 7.5%. Two years in a row, 15%. Now you're looking at another 7.5% increase. I'd like to know what y'all been doing with all this money since the reserve was very well secured until you start chipping a little piece here and a little piece there and allocating those dollars wherever you also chose. So now we, the recipients, have to give to you to be able to establish you all and your general fund. That's not right. And when I stood before you all last week, I told you, you all are putting dollar and cents over lives, over livelihoods, and that's not fair to us either. So I'm asking each of you all to think deeply in your hearts to see how you all would receive such a mandate.
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Jones, 11893 Providence Road, Shreveport, 71129. I have a question concerning cattle virtual academy, which I see is listed at 6.07 on the other action items. My daughter attends cattle virtual academy. In fact, she's a graduating senior. And my question is concerning this possible purchase of the Louisiana Tech University because since she been there since 2022, we have never known where we were going to be the next year. It's always up in the air. Are we going to go to Green Oaks? Are we going to stay at Louisiana Tech? So I just want to know if you all are purchasing so Green Oaks is off the agenda? We're not heading toward North Shreveport anymore?
We can't answer that, but I can have staff get with you. If somebody from staff would get with Ms. Jones.
Okay. And also since I opened it up about cattle virtual academy, I need to ask someone concerning my child's discipline record there too, since we did put cattle virtual academy out here on the agenda. So I need someone from staff to answer those questions concerning getting that information removed from her discipline record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody from staff can get with you, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Marby Barker. I live at 9453 Ellerby Road, Lot 22, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I am a retiree of 10 years and I want to start my little discussion by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. You do a thankless job a lot of the time and you hear a lot of people complain, I'm sure. And I just want to say I appreciate each of you on the board that step up and spend time out of your daily task to be sure that kids are taken care of. And I ask that you now take a moment and be sure we're taking care of our teachers as well. I would just like to ask and clarify that each of you know, this retiree program is going to not be a choice for us. We're going to be required to move to that program. I emailed every one of you on the board yesterday because yesterday was when I found out that this change was going to take place. I heard from three people. And two of those three gave very, very detailed information, put me in contact with people that could help me, and I appreciate that. But one of those responses seemed to indicate that I still had that option. So I hope that you all take the time to read the presentation, ask questions, make a good informed decision because retirees will not have a choice if this plan passes as it is currently written. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby Woodruff. I live at 1525 Suburbia Drive. I'm also here on behalf of All Streets, All People, Shreveport DSA, and Shreveport Coalition for Democracy. It's a long name, sorry, y'all. So I'm coming here today to speak about a few different issues. I initially wasn't even planning on speaking about the issue when it comes to retirement, but after hearing a lot of these very wise folks behind me, some of which I actually know from my time being a lifelong cattle parish school student, it's, to me, I think, very shameful that I've seen this pattern repeated throughout my entire life of not prioritizing the needs of teachers and not prioritizing especially the needs of teachers who have given twice my lifetime to this parish. It's something that, in fact, my mom had to experience. She had to retire early due to the retirement rules surrounding cattle parish teachers not really being in favor of teachers. And I think that this has been a consistent issue to the point now where I've known about it. I'm only 23 years old. I've known other teachers throughout my entire time that have had this problem and my mother herself has dealt with this. And now we have dozens of people behind me talking about this exact same issue. And I think it's especially shameful when we're talking about teachers who, like I said, have given double my lifetime to a job that while, of course, you guys, you're public servants, you deal with a lot of flack. As I'm sure you guys are all aware, being a teacher, just as hard, in my opinion, if not harder, you're dealing with twice the amount of flack, less budgets. And on top of that, now with a lot of these school closures, you're asking the teachers to do twice as much with half the benefits? It's not right to me. And to me, I think, I think it kind of is emblematic of a wider pattern of this parish to prioritize profits over people and to continuously seek ways that we can kind of, you know, get dollars here and there and kind of stretch out the budget and making sure that we're just giving out just enough information to the public so it's okay, but not enough for people to actually know what's going on and what's effective. I've spent the past week informing people as to what's been going on with a number of different issues on the school board and none of them know, which to me is an indictment on the level of public engagement that this school board is doing in a lot of ways. It's shameful and I think that there needs to be better oversight and more of a direct job supporting teachers. And especially when we're having conversations around retirement, no teacher who is retiring should be forced into a new option. This is gross and I think that it needs to be a direct conversation that you are having more with retired teachers. There should be not a single retired teacher or teacher who is planning to retire in the next five years who does not know the ins and outs of this plan and who has not been able to give their thoughts directly to you. And the fact that you're having people here right now, last second coming up to you, talked about this, is a problem. And it's a problem that's going to start building up very, very quickly as discontent grows as these schools close and more and more teachers have more and more pressure placed upon them. We've already seen teachers flee for these exact reasons. It's not just about the retirement. We do not prioritize their needs over and over and over again. This is something that must change now or else we're going to see a full collapse of our teaching, of our teachers within this parish. Everybody already knows it. People have been talking about it for a while. We need to do something about it. Y'all need to start actually prioritizing the teachers that make this place function.
I'm a shepherd, 10305 Loma Vista Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Burton and the board, I tried to sit there and not say anything, I'm sorry, but this, this topic is just, is heartbreaking. And when I read this under number three, why retirees' healthcare is driving the cost, it just feels like the time that we put in, it didn't matter to anybody, you know, we're just out there now. And most people think now that education is a thankless profession. And I know, like, all of the retirees and plus the ones that are working now, we put in the work and, you know, not always supported in what we do, but this is just heartbreaking. And the part where it says that three of us have more, three or more chronic conditions, and I believe it was Ms. Berry that said, some of it is caused because of what we did in the past. So we are reaping those things now. And I just want to talk a little bit about the medication. And I, this year, I've had like some serious concerns. And one of the medications that I was on was really working and I, you know, they took it off the insurance plan and I couldn't afford it anymore. So I called the insurance company myself to see, I'm like, does it make sense for you that I, you know, use something that works than for you to give me something in place of it? That I end up in the hospital? And that happened like several times, almost died from one. And, you know, they say that it's just policy. You know, I think we are people, we are human beings and we put in the work. So I would just hope you all would consider, reconsider this package. And retirees, we haven't received a cost of living increase in about five years now. So, you know, please consider that. Thank you.
I think she's the last one.
I was trying to.
Making sure. Okay, come on up, ma'am. Ms. Thomas, if you don't mind, can you let her go before you?
Sure. I thought I was waiting.
No, 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 I'm asking you to come on up. Since she's the organization, I'll let her be.
But I am. Yeah, that's okay. No, you're good. I was going to adjust the mic for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all very much. Andrea Labor at 8501 Millicent Way. I wasn't actually planning on speaking tonight, but I want to speak as somebody who considered teaching and decided that I could not do it for financial reasons. I worked as a substitute teacher while I was getting my accounting degree. I wanted to go into teaching. I loved the schools. I loved the kids. I loved working with them. But as an accountant, we learn what's called opportunity cost. And what I learned from that and what I am seeing tonight is that not only are the current retirees and soon-to-be retirees looking at the sacrifices they have made and the sacrifices they are being asked to make, I'm looking at the sacrifices that your next generation of teachers are being asked to make and how much trust they are expected to have in a system when this is something that may well blindside them 10, 20, 30 years down the line. Our teachers need to be able to have faith in our system. Everyone who works in this parish needs to be able to have faith in this system. And I just, I've seen, I've been here before. I've seen that y'all care. I'm just asking y'all to please consider not only the people behind me and the people who couldn't be here tonight, but the people who may choose to never be here because they are seeing that they may not be taken care of no matter how much work they put into the system. And a lot of us choose to go somewhere else. Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Jordan Thomas, 1726 Line Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101, President of Red River United. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Burton. Tonight, I want to speak plainly. According to the Board Minutes from January 2024, health insurance premiums increased by 7.5% for the 2024-2025 school year. In the November 2024 Board Minutes, we saw another 7.5 increase that went into effect this school year. Tonight, you are considering another increase for next school year. So for the third year in a row, the district is poised to increase employee insurance costs by another 7.5%. Three consecutive years of asking our employees to pay more, significantly more, just to keep the same coverage. And yet, there has been no permanent local pay raise since 2017. Eight years. Not $1 added to permanently improve compensation. When you step back and look at the full picture, it becomes even more concerning. Benefits such as insurance and retirement are fundamental to attracting and retaining employees. They are not extras. They are core parts of total compensation. By repeatedly increasing insurance costs with no permanent salary increase, this district is becoming less and less attractive and affordable to the very people who serve our students every single day. And it gets even worse for our long-serving employees. The district's salary schedules, which have not been properly adjusted, are setting them up for reduced retirement income. Every year they go uncorrected compounds the loss, not just in today's paycheck, but in tomorrow's retirement check. These are the people who have given you their careers. I also recognize that many of you will be finishing your time on this board after next year. This is your window, your final opportunity to leave a legacy that will be remembered. Not a legacy of cost shifting, not a legacy of missed chances, but a legacy of courage, clarity, and fairness. The 1998 board is remembered for the historic pay increase they championed before sending it to the voters. The 2017 board is remembered for looking inward and delivering a substantial raise. What will this board be remembered for? It is time to act, not delay, not defer to the next group. Act now. Let's correct the salary schedules and restore permanent salary increases because excellence, real excellence, means investing in the people who deliver it. Every one of us, every day. You have the authority. You have the moment. Let your legacy be the one that chose excellence over excuses, investment over indifference, and people over postponement. Let it begin with ensuring employees and retirees have the benefits they deserve and have earned. have earned, correcting salary schedules, and implementing permanent pay increases. Our educators deserve it. Our future workforce depends on it, and your legacy can be defined by it.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. That brings us down to establishing the agenda for the November 18th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board meeting, and at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Burton.
Thank you, President Green. Board members, for your consideration tonight, item 4.01, personnel leaves certified and classified, 4.02, personnel resignations certified and classified, 5.01, purchasing bids, and we have one there, 6.01, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution authorizing the incurrence of debt and issuance of general obligation school bond series 2026 of the parish-wide school district of Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith, 6.02, consideration to approve MOU between Caddo Parish Public Schools and Brentwood Hospital of Shreveport, 6.03, consideration to approve mental health inter-agency agreement, 6.04, consideration to approve the easement agreement with the village of Mooreingsport, 6.05, consideration to approve the extension of the State of Louisiana Agency lease number 22131 with Apex Natural Gas LLC for an additional two-year period, 6.06, begin the process of naming the existing softball field at Seabird High School after Jerry Badgley and receive community input, 6.07, consideration to approve staff to formally initiate price negotiations for the property owned by Louisiana Tech University, which includes the current site where Caddo Virtual Academy is located, and additional frontage property owned by the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce and others, 6.08, consideration for approval to accept purchase offer for the Pine Valley Elementary property, 6.09, consideration to approve revision to CPSB policy EFAB, employ use of social media, 6.10, consideration to approve proposed changes to the Caddo Parish School Board insurance plans, 6.11, consideration to approve revisions to CPSB policy 1DDF, education of students with exceptionalities.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. At this time, I'll go back through the agenda, and if there's any questions, if there's any questions, if there's any questions at this time, you can make sure you get on the board. 6.0, no, I'll start at 4.01. Not just yet. Yeah. 4.02. Can't do that anyway. 5.01, any questions? Six, Dr. Vincent?
When are the calculators needed? I think on the sheet it said for testing.
You're at 6.01. No, you're at 5.01. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty.
Dr. Vincent, those, this is a purchase that is replacing current calculators. We have an inventory. We have an adequate supply to meet our needs, but we know as we go through the rest of this year, we're going to need to ensure that we have the inventory to replace those.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, that's perfect. Last question on this 5.01. If we deny this bid, what's the process of reissuing it?
Ms. Scott here. Yeah, Ms. Scott, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you deny the bid, you're going to have to go through the bid process all over again.
Okay, so it's just that simple, no legal, we're not on the hook for anything, we just deny it and then resubmit it?
You can deny it, and we have to send out notices to everyone that bid, and then we go through the bid process again.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vincent. Ms. Yates?
How long does the bid process take?
It depends on what we're bidding. With this particular bid here, it's advertised for 15 days.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Omling?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. I'm seeing where one of the bidders on this, on this calculator bid was for mending. And my question is, are there points that are allotted for local business versus the folks out of New York who won this bid by $355? Tell me exactly what we're doing for the locals that bid on these and may get out, out, kind of beat out just by a little bit.
Hey, before you answer that question, I got the attorney on. Mr. Abrams.
I can answer that question, but initially, the question was whether or not we'd go back out for bid if we don't accept a bid. The answer would be no, you could not go out unless you have to say you don't have the funding for it, or you have to wait another whole year in order to go back out for it. Did you hear what I said?
Yes.
There you are, Mr. Abrams, can you repeat it again?
You did have, these were responsive bids within the budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. If you didn't have, what you have now is adequate bids, the only way that you could not award these bids is if you did not have it in your budget. You do have the money that's in your budget. Otherwise, you have to say you're not going to go out for it for at least another year. You're not allowed to do it immediately.
That was Dr. Vincent's questions, but I wanted to ask a question since you brought that up. The writing in there specifically says the school board can reject any and all bids without any cause, or I can't remember the exact word, but something to that effect.
It says that, but the law requires that if you have that money within the budget and you decide you're not going to do it, then you have to rebid it. But you can't rebid it at doing, it'd have to be one year, from what I understand. You have to wait a one-year period. You can't just say you're not doing it.
Let's check into that a little bit further because I thought the contract would override. And I, I would, because we're going to have a committee on that, I'd like to know the exact answer and not, you know. So, but anyway, back to my question, go ahead.
With regard to your question, there are no point systems in the bid process. You are referencing RLP process that you go award, you rate those proposals. The bid process is strictly based on the lowest responsive bidder. You don't award points.
So I'm going to bring up a program that's, I don't think is even in existence any, any longer. Opportunity Caddo did give out points and special recognitions for those groups who are supplying U.S.-made materials and local businesses for that. They get, have a little bit of an edge, and so, and whether they're a minority, I'm saying, is that system out the window now, or what?
No, Opportunity Caddo is still a program, but there are no point systems awarded. I don't know what you're referencing in regards to giving out points, but in a bid, you're not, you can't award points. The bid is not based on points.
Yeah, I'm calling it points because it's been so long since I was in that, I can't remember exactly what we did, but they were also allowed a little bit higher because of being local, U.S., and all of that. They were allowed a higher price that was acceptable, as long as it was less than 10%. I'm trying to work, it's been.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Dr. Vincent?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Abrams, I would, can you, and thank you, I think we're done. I just wanted to see, Mr. Abrams, can you verify that length of time because that's, that's, I guess, important in, in the discussion? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. So that was 5.01. We're now down to 6.01. Any questions? Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have some questions about this MOU with Brentwood Hospital.
I think that's 6.02. This, I'm on 6.01.
I was so eager to discuss it, my apologies.
Go ahead, Mr. Burton.
I just want to say, we do have our bond counsel here if any, any board member does have a question regarding 6.01.
So, so that nobody has anything on 6.01? Okay, you need to get off. Get off. If you don't see, okay, Mr. Omling?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have questions on this. The $21 million sale, is that 21 million in one sale, or is this going to be incremental through time for different stages to sell these bonds?
I'm going to call up bond, oh, okay. Mr. Howard?
That'll be in one sale, Mr. Omling, and we'll sell in, in January.
Okay, one sale. What is the total interest on, do we anticipate for the sale of these bonds?
I don't have that number right now. Our municipal advisor, Mr. Lucius McGee, is here from Argent. He can, he can speak to, to the, the current market as far as interest rates.
I noticed that in the documents, it was talking about not higher than 8%.
Yes, it'll be much lower than that, but I'll let Mr. McGee speak to that.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Lucius McGee, from Ruston, Louisiana, Argent advisor, your municipal advisor, Grant Sluter, from New Orleans, Foley and Juddell. I want to start off first by, we need to, we need to have that music at the, at the end so everybody stays. That was fabulous.
Yes, indeed.
On, on the, on the bonds, a number of years ago, the public, the school board put out and, and put out, they were going to borrow 88.3 million over a number of years to keep the, the millage at 5.03 mills in the, for the entirety time, hopefully not going over that. We've been able to do that with the way that some of the prices have gone up, how the assessed valuation has gone up, we're able to now complete that 88.3 million issuance with these bonds here. So what, what we believe that we will see right now, you know, the interest rates move around a lot. So these are 20-year bonds. Current rates right now are somewhere between 4 and 1/4, 4 and 1/2 on where the, the current market rates are. So let me just say, the rate is going to be somewhere between 4 and 5% that we would pay on this. We don't know until we sell the bonds where they're going to be, so I just want to open it up there. So if, our, our job, number one, is to keep that millage from going up, so the public does not have to pay any more in their millage than they're paying today. And we try to get as much money as we can get out of the bond market for the projects that the school board has. So we may sell a bond that has a coupon rate higher than the market rate, and then the, the market will pay us more than 100 cents on the dollar for that. So if we're selling $21 million worth of bonds, we might get $22 million worth of bond proceeds, which helps everybody out, and it doesn't change the millage rate to the taxpayer. So right now, that's where we're looking at on, on, on rates. As far as the, the amount of interest paid, we won't really know that until we know the exact amount of the bonds over the total amount.
With those figures that you just gave, we're talking about somewhere around 11 to 12 million dollars in interest?
Yes, sir.
This sale is going to complete and exhaust the 88 million, did I get that correct?
Yes, sir, that, that election, that's correct.
Is it really a good idea to do that right now? We, we think that interest rates are going to go down. The last scenario that you just gave, I don't see that happening right now. So what are your thoughts on that?
Based on where we are with the, the economy, the, the, the structure of the economy, just, just so you know, Argent Financial Group is based in Ruston. We are a diversified wealth management company, and we have assets under our administration of over $100 billion. So we are managing money, we're buying bonds and selling bonds as well. So knowing where the, the market is is something that, we spend a lot of money.
So you think it's going to go down a little bit, then?
I, I think, I think we're, I think we're where we ought to be to be able to sell these bonds right now, based on the demand of the projects that we have and current interest rates.
Do you think the rates are going to go down a little bit?
If you put me on the spot for that, I think there's 100%.
Well, that was my question.
Yes, there's 100% chance that they'll be different than they are today.
So, so are we, would we not be wiser with public money to wait until further, closer to the end of the year?
These bonds will be sold towards the end of the year. They're not going to be sold today. It takes about, how long is it going to take? About 45 days to 60 days to be able to sell these bonds and get the money.
Okay, that'll, that'll probably give us another quarter.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, Fed Operations right now, the Federal Open Market Committee, they are doing, they're adding liquidity to the market at $100 billion right now. So there, there is some liquidity that, that we can take advantage of, which will give us an opportunity. We won't know for a while until whether this was a good deal or not, but we believe, based on the information that we have right now, this is a good time to sell bonds.
When is the expiration of the 88 million from the original?
The 88 million? It'll be 20 years from this. Now, seven years ago, eight years ago, we started this process with $10 million at a time.
Right. Okay, so it has to be used, the 88 million needs to be used up by what date in time?
There's, you know, that, that.
Yeah. The, this is the last series of bonds. The proceeds have to be reasonably expended within three years of this date. Each series of bonds that we've had since the 2019 election have each been 20 years from the date of that particular bond issue. This last issue will go out to 2045. Might also mention, just quickly, remind everyone, you all have an extremely high bond rating. Your last bond rating was earlier this year. Standard and Poor's revised it from A-plus stable to A-plus positive, which indicates and anticipate a, a good chance of you getting an increase the next time we go out for a bond rating. So that helps you a great deal with your sale, results in the lowest interest rate at any point that we go out. We're talking about a sale of the bonds January 14th, and funds in the bank February 5th. I just wanted to ask, I just know that you don't create wealth through borrowing money, okay, and that's what this is, especially when you are not in need to borrow money. So it's kind of hard for me to do that because we're going to throw away 11 or 12 million dollars. So it's just tough for me to, to swallow that, okay? Very tough.
You had a good question about the not exceeding 8%. That was what was in the proposition approved by the voters in 2019. That's a customary figure because the bonds may be issued over. That's a customary figure because the bonds may be issued over seven, eight, nine, 10 years. But as the financial advisor has indicated, current market, I mean, the latest bonds we've sold have been closer to 4 and 1/4%. And we've had a number of school boards that have sold this year and have obtained excellent results. They include St. Tammany School Board, Lafayette School Board, Borogard, Iberia, just a, a number that had successful elections, and they've all sold this year and had very good results.
I appreciate y'all. You do do a very good job. Those were questions that I just really wanted to better understand. And the timing was just kind of, you know, but 45 days out, I think, will be much better for us. Thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Umbling. And I would have hated for y'all to come way down here without speaking to us. So, Mr. Rochelle is on. Mr. Rochelle?
Thank you, Madam President. I think y'all covered a little bit of this, and I did visit with, with Jeff about this. Is, I think it's good to give a little bit of a historical background of what the original bond's purpose was. I don't know who's, who's going to do that. There may be some even on the board that may not even know what the original bond was, much less some people in the public. So, if we have somebody that can kind of give a little general background and historical information, I believe, and, and the purposes, I think that would be good.
Okay, the purposes for, for this 88.3 million that was approved by the voters to be issued were HVAC replacements at our, at our building locations, purchase of new school buses, and security upgrades. And we have used them for, for all three of those. And the, just to touch on Mr. Umbling's question, the, another reason for, for going ahead and doing these last two $10 million in one issue of 21.3 is that, that we need the school buses. We have a, an urgent need to have more school buses sooner rather than later. And, and also, Mr. White has assured us that, that he can, he has the, the workers in the area, and he can, he can use all of the, the funds allotted for the HVAC within that three years. So, so there is a need for that, and so that, it's more than just that we have the capacity, though that is great that we have the capacity within our, within our budget.
Okay, and, and so, I'm just going to kind of put this, oh.
I was just going to mention that this school board has been very, very careful in calling these bond elections. And as you typically do in 2019, in calling the election, you also adopted a resolution that set forth a detailed capital improvement plan, committing to the voters how you are going to expend every last dollar of bond proceeds.
Thank you. They, I'm going to put this in a little bit of a summary as best I can. And this is as, really as much for the public as it is anything else is.
Do you have some questions in that summary, Mr.?
I can put, is that true at the very end of it, if that's, okay? I'll just add that at the end. Is the, is one, it's important that we continue to keep our, the millages that we have for debt as low as possible and not, and not raise them. Number two, there's timing, both with the market of, of selling the bonds. And it also appears that there's, and I know this is true, that's why I'm stating it, is, is that we have timing for the expenditures that we have. So, there's, either with getting school buses, because we have some that are aging out, HVAC systems, we've been through the process before that we've actually had to make sure, and we, we, I believe we ordered and purchased HVAC systems, maybe seemed like it was almost a year in advance because of cost. So, the timing, all of these pieces to the puzzle are, are, are coming into play. And the, does, Jeff, do you happen to know what the, what was the millage that we had for indebtedness 15 years ago, 20 years ago? Pick it, I don't care how long ago.
I don't know right off. I think it's been five mills for a long time. We've not increased it.
Well, I know that, but I, I, if I could find it on my
The total millage has decreased by 20% over the last 15 to 20 years.
Hang on, say that again, please?
The total millage, property tax millage that, that we've asked of voters has decreased by 20% over the last 15 to 20 years.
So, the, and, and some of this really is just, I'm, I'm, I have more stories, okay?
I don't have the specific millage figures, but having worked with the school board for decades, I can tell you that leading up to the 2019, there'd been continuing, continuous decreases in the GO bond millage. And then when it got down to the five mills, you submitted the 2019 election. But there were significant decreases in the millage in prior years.
Well, our debt ratio is incredibly low for a governmental body our size. It's incredible.
That is absolutely correct.
Well, okay, and, and thank you for allowing me a little bit, do I need to say, is that true?
Absolutely.
Okay, is that, is that true, what I just stated? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rochelle, for your questions. Dr. Vincent?
Yes, sir. Thank you all so much for traveling to and, you know, from Ruston and I think Baton Rouge. But I guess my question was along the line of, of Mr. Umbling. I said, I've inquired about this and just want to get educated on it. And when interest rates were at a all-time low, why didn't we, you know, move around?
That's a great question, Dr. Vincent. To keep that millage where it is right now, we were issuing as much as we could to keep that millage there. We could have borrowed more, but we would have had to increase the millage to do that.
The debt part of it, yes.
So, now, now we have a place where we can just assess the, the five mills and pay for this 21 million.
If I might just follow up on that, when the voters approve the ballot proposition, state law requires us to state what the estimated millage is to pay those bonds, realizing the legal obligation is to levy whatever rate is required to pay those bonds. But we put in the proposition, there's no expected increase above the five mills. And the school board has been very diligent in trying to keep it at that level, and has been successful at keeping it at the five mills.
Right, so, and this is from my education, seriously. So, the debt piece would have affected the mills, if that makes sense?
Right, if you had issued more bonds quicker, we would have had to increase the taxation to the property tax rate.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you. Just trying to understand it. Knowledge is power. Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Since there's no, was there anything you want to say, Mr. Burton?
Thank you all, travel safely.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All righty. There's no one else on the board. That leaves us to 6.02. Mr. Little.
Thank you, ma'am. I just had some clarifying questions on this, if I could. The, the MOU between Caddo Parish and Brentwood Hospital, is this, is this a preferred vendor? Can parents have other options if they, if they have those available? And then what happens if a family refuses to abide by the recommendation for a referral to Brentwood Hospital?
First of all, yes. It, families have 100% choice of where they want to go. And to the board members, we wanted to, you know, when we're observing either a, a problem with a student with academics, attendance, or behavior, many times after digging through, we find that there's a, a mental health concern. We are limited, and of course, we can ask families to go and, and receive outpatient. First of all, we have a school psychologist on site who many times will do an emergency evaluation of that child and call in the family and recommend that they go to Brentwood Hospital, because of course, that's our local facility. What we found, though, there are many families who don't wish to go to Brentwood. And the reason why they don't is, one, there's a stigma attached to going to Brentwood Hospital. Another thing, there, many times they're very afraid that they may be hospitalized there. And so, staff brought to me a recommendation of, Mr. Burton, we have so many outpatient mental health providers, but we have no outpatient opportunities for Brentwood. Could we do this? Could we establish an agreement with them where instead of if we recommend going to Brentwood and the family agrees, can they go to the harbor and have Brentwood meet them at the harbor and have outpatient services there instead of them having to go to Brentwood? So, that's the only thing where we're requesting. We're, we're not advocating that this is all they use. The only thing we're doing is just saying, you don't have to go to Brentwood. Brentwood's going to come to us and for three days a week, offer to those families that are interested outpatient services.
I, I like that, but I don't see that in the top sheet on the introduction to the, to the MOU. And I just, I just want to make sure that this is very carefully approached, that this is not considered a, an ashcan for kids that have behavior issues or act up or speak too much in class, where the automatic response from the educator is, you're going to Brentwood.
Well, educator's not going to have that ability to do that. Now, I think if you look at the scope of services, actually within the MOU, it identifies all of what Brentwood would do as well as what we were, what we would do. And again, we are not changing our processes. The only thing that we're changing is we're offering families a different location for services.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Ms. Yates?
How many other MOUs do we have with other organizations like Brentwood?
You're, you're actually going to approve another one tonight. I would have to go back and, and look. They have to meet our district policy that you've established as far as being a mental health provider. They have to, of course, be insured. They have to meet, again, the rubric. And based upon the evaluation of that vendor or that service, then they are recommended by Dr. White's office, who is our school psychologist. And I know Mr. Abrams may want to add to that.
Thank you.
We also have to have allowed parents to use any other one that meets the qualifications. They don't just, we have ones that we send them to, that Mr. Burton is talking about. But if the parents have someone they want to use, they are allowed to use that one also. But they have to follow the rules as to how and when they can meet the patient and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Mr. Rochelle?
Okay, just one second. Okay, the, the, I'm going to come, I want to deal with this one, and then I have a question maybe with some of the documents that were, that were provided. Is, from what I understand, is there are individual students that have avoided potentially good mental health care and/or their parents or guardians may have avoided it just because of where they had to go? Okay, now that's a shame. Okay, and the, and so we've, Brentwood now can do an off-site where we, at Building 9, praise God, it gets used for something now instead of being, we had, it was an empty building for years. And it's become an incredible asset and tool, is that we've allocated space there for them to now to be able to do this, where we have so many other organizations that are working and helping the, 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 the school system and all of our students, teachers, I mean, it's, there's everything that's covered there. So, we, we've allocated them space to be able to do that.
This will be in the evening. This will be after all of the work is, is done. So, we will be able to maintain confidentiality with those families. We have worked with Kelly Todd at D Y J, who is also one of our partners at the harbor.
Tell everybody what D Y J is.
Volunteers for Youth Justice. So, she is well aware, she is advocating this because she sees through the hearing process how many students need mental health services.
Okay, and is this anything that the school board has to even get involved in?
It's your property.
Well, hang on, I, I mean, as far as the, the students in, in, in these issues, these are just things that we add on to, not only just educating them.
Yeah, we may have a, a student, I mean, we have, you know, issues with students being extremely aggressive. We have students that have suicidal tendencies. We have students that are severely depressed. And, and when that comes up, and we are trying to provide support for those families, many times we've heard, I don't want to go to Brentwood. And so, because of that now, the only thing we're doing is offering the family an alternative location for the same service they would get through outpatient at Brentwood.
Okay, since I believe this is definitely going to be going on consent, or at least I hope so, is I'd just like to thank staff for recognizing the problem and coming up with a solution. Is that true?
There we go. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Don't we have a list of mental health providers that we approved maybe within the past year or so?
Yeah, you have 6.03. You're actually adding another mental health in our agency to, to that list. But Brentwood doesn't come into Caddo Parish schools.
Okay, so, if there's a current problem with a student without any of, any of these agreements tonight, don't we have a list? Don't, don't we get in contact with the parent and say, here's a list of people that we would recommend?
But those typically aren't the level that Brentwood Hospital can provide. Brentwood Hospital will have the staff that is specifically trained to address the high level of depression, aggression, that many of our general counselor agencies that provide support would not be able to provide.
Why not just add them to that list, then?
Because then they would be coming into our schools, and I did not want that. I did not want Brentwood Hospital coming into our schools. I think that would create a stigma as well, and lots of problems. And so, that's why I identified one location where it could be the hub, truly the harbor, that's the purpose of that. And again, families can choose to do this or not. We're not forcing anyone. The only thing we're doing is providing a location.
Where does it say that a family could opt out if they're not interested in this?
The family actually has to agree that their child be treated at any wel, using any of mental health providers. They have to agree to it. You can't force any of them. So, they have to agree.
Where does it say that?
Yeah, ours says, refer eligible students to the program through Caddo Parish Schools Behavioral Health Department, including referrals initiated at the request of the parent or guardian. The only thing that we do, again, is refer. There's, there's, we, we never, first of all, it would be in an evening. The fan, the student would already be dismissed from school. So, this would be a family choosing to take part in this outpatient service.
Okay, could we just put explicitly in there that?
That, that's pretty much the standard on everything that has to do with patient, you know, doctor-patient relationships. You know, we have to have authorization for any child to be treated. We can't do it unless it's an emergency. I mean, all the staff knows that.
If that's the standard, then can we just put the standard in here and put a clause that says families don't have to participate in these services? Just like one extra bullet point somewhere, just to, to be safe?
I think the last bullet, to me, does that, notwithstanding the foregoing, Caddo Parish Public School is not obligated to refer students to Brentwood. So, we're, again, we're not forcing, we're not obligated to refer. And if we do refer, we can't make them go. But if, if Mr. Abrams wants to.
It would be against the law for us to refer or without getting parental consent to have someone treated, period. Doctor or whomever, we try to get consent unless it's, you have to get consent unless it's an emergency.
I think that we've just seen some really wild encroachments on parental rights over the past five years regarding medical decisions with the past five years regarding medical decisions with kids. And if this is the standard, I don't see why we couldn't just add in a bullet point that very clearly says, "Families do not have to go with the recommended service or the referred service." It just requires consent of parent or guardian, just an extra little bullet point to make sure all of our bases are covered, and make sure we're not encroaching on parental rights, because we have seen some very crazy things the past five years.
Ms. Yates? I apologize. Were you finished, Ms. McLean?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Yates?
I do agree with Ms. McLean, if we could add that part in there.
Mr. Burton doesn't see an issue with adding.
Of course, we'll always defer to the attorney.
The only issue is, I think this has been going on since September, trying to get this MOU done, and this came actually... This portion came from Brentwood that was finally approved through their council.
That's understandable, but it's the first time it's come in front of the board?
I understand that, but all I'm saying is, we'll be going back probably for... You know, to go through their council again, for just a couple of words. If you look at the language, it says, "Refer eligible students..." This is Caddo Parish responsibilities. "Refer eligible students to the program through the Caddo Parish Public School Behavioral Health Department, including referrals initiated at the request of a parent or guardian." That's what it is. We can add it. I mean, we can do that if you want to, but I think that's what it does. I mean, I can't imagine...
Are you saying it's saying the same thing, Mr. Abrams?
Yes, same thing, because we... I promise you, on every single thing we have that is referring for medical, it goes through a referral. It has to be referred. All the things with David Brains and everybody else that is a referral from... That the parent has approved.
And this is coming, this is a fruit of the fact, parents aren't choosing to do what we've referred them to do. I mean, we have a suicidal child. They need out... They need to, many times, immediate inpatient services. They're refusing to do that. And so, because of that, again, we can't force them. So, now, we've come up with an alternative that, because we hear, we don't want to go to Brentwood. So, I think a fruit of this is showing that parents have the choice, and that's why we're bringing this, because we can't force them to go anywhere. But I have no problem with adding it, but I do now see Mr. Abrams' concern is, now we're probably looking at even now January, before we get this back to you approved. So, are we going to miss students having that opportunity? Because they're ready. They're ready to begin next week.
Ms. Yates?
Is there other organizations already out there that can do it besides Brentwood?
Again, as I said earlier, not to that level. We're talking about, these are our most aggressive, our most, you know, students that have the highest level of mental health needs.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yates. Thank you, Mr. Burton. Thank you, Mr. Abrams. We're now down... I don't see anybody else, so we're now down to 6.03. No questions on 6.03. Now down to Ms. McLean?
Thank you. I actually had these two, and looked at them as the same thing earlier, and didn't realize they were separated. So, it took me a minute to figure that out. Okay, I kind of have the same concerns with this. Where is... Is there anything specific in here that says that parents can opt out of these kinds of referrals?
Mr. Abrams, it's also in our policy.
This is agreement between us and the actual healthcare provider, that they are going to come in and abide by our rules, is what it announced to. This is not between us and the parent. This is how, if they come in at our facility, they're going to have to follow our rules, is what it announced to. And we have an agreement to do certain things with them. They can only do certain things. They have to get consent from a parent to do anything. We're not getting consent from the parent. And like I said, we have people that are... The parents are directly bringing in, and they're the ones that are giving the consent. The parents are giving the consent.
Okay, so this would be that list of providers that we approved?
Approved.
I can't tell you when, it's August? Okay.
That's when we approved it, August. Every year.
Okay. And so, it says... I believe it says somewhere in here that if students are already receiving care from these providers, then they can also come on the site and provide care. Is that right?
The law has changed so much now that they are forcing the idea that any parent can have any treatment they want, basically. And that's why the statutes now, they don't want, really, the school districts limiting only to the ones who have these contracts. Now, the statute requires that any parent who wants to use a provider, that we have to give them access. So, that's what's being provided, but they have to agree that they don't come in and pull a child out of class without getting approval, you know, follow the rules and all of that. They just can't show up at any period of time and decide they're going to do an evaluation or do some type of treatment during that time. So, this is just an agreement between us and them as to how they can work within the school district. It does not mean that we're getting an okay from the parent that, you know, that they're giving their consent. The parent has to give consent to that organization, the healthcare provider, to provide it, just like whenever you go to a doctor. They have to get that consent, make sure they have it. This is just to say, when you come into the school board, you're going to follow our rules, you know? And you don't go and pull students out and all this kind of stuff. And you're not going to... If they have an I E P, the I E P is going to be followed. You can't just go in and do whatever you want to do, you know? That's the way it works.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And may I also say, in our policy, which is J G C F A, it says, "Behavioral health services shall be permitted during school hours if the student's parent or legal guardian presents a behavioral health evaluation performed by an evaluator." So, we don't do anything unless we have that permission from parents.
It says unless they provide a... What was that?
A request, a behavioral health evaluation performed by an evaluator, as well as an assessment or authorized treatment plan performed by a behavioral health provider. So, again, we make sure that the parent has signed off on that before they see anyone.
Okay.
Oh, you finished, Ms. Yates? I mean, Ms. McLean?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Yates?
It says they are Delaware Corporation, qualified to do business in Louisiana. Do they actually have an office in Louisiana? Or are they telehealth? No, hazel health. I'm not talking about an employee of Caddo Parish Schools.
I know they have met the rubric requirement. I do not know if they're only providing the telehealth or rehabilitation services. I don't know. I'd have to get that information to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Yates. Mr. Rochelle?
This is really more of a response. I'm looking on page two. It looks like it's a little bit into the first paragraph that I believe answers what Ms. Yates just asked, is that all personnel... Where did it go to? I'm scrolling through. Okay, I'm sorry. It is on page one, that it says, "When reverend services are needed, the Louisiana Behavioral Healthcare Partnership will coordinate..." All personnel meet all the requirements of the state of Louisiana and everything else in there.
That's not what I asked. I asked if they were telehealth.
Well, I'll find out momentarily.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Were you finished? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rochelle, for your question. Consideration to approve the easement agreement with the Village of Morning Sport. No questions? Okay. I actually have a question there. The softball field and baseball field for Byrd, two different things?
Yes.
Okay, so the softball field is on Byrd's campus?
Yes.
Because what I did not want to do is something that we put a lot of money to and don't own, name it after somebody.
May I have an answer?
Go ahead, Mr. Little.
Thank you, Ms. President. This was an initiative by the Centennial Committee at Byrd. It was not done initially with the knowledge of Mr. Badgley, because they felt like he is too humble to accept this honor. There's no name on the field already, and the attachments of this, it is already pre-funded, so it will not cost the school board anything. And it is compliant with our policy, because even though Mr. Badgley's living, you can name a field, an athletic field, after a living person. A building, you cannot. So, it does meet that criteria. Universal support for all leadership organizations at Byrd.
Okay. Yeah, be careful with that. I've gotten in trouble by...
Merely universal. Seemingly universal. Seemingly universal.
All righty. All righty, so that was my question. So, nobody else on 6.06? Mr. Rochelle?
The... Have we unofficially been in contact with Louisiana Tech and other parties?
Yes, unofficially.
Okay. The... And this is for the, hopefully, the new Caddo Career and Technical Center?
Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimated cost of what our new facility will be?
Also, the new facility?
Yes, if we do anything else over there.
As far as the new... What the cost of the new Career Center would be?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle, at this time, a definite scope has not been set, so giving you a hard-dollar estimate is going to be rather difficult. I'd say we're talking in the range of between 50 and 70 million is what we're talking about, and that would be something commensurate with what was put up in Bossier. Now, if we take that and double or triple the square footage, of course, the cost would go up.
Okay. And that was... And I knew that we were very early in the process for you to... And I appreciate you having a range there. The... Superintendent Burton, you've been around long enough, and this comes to... I will get to a question, is the... With our Caddo Career and Technical Center, and there is one individual that I think played such a huge part in this, in what it went to and grew and developed to. And as I was part of the Caddo Career and Technical Center Foundation, I got to see a whole lot more than I would have, just even being a board member. The is... Didn't the state include... The state use our systems that we put in place? I'm going to say 15, 20 years ago, almost. Okay? I'm going to say 15. Okay? And our principal and representatives went all over the state, showing them what we were doing and how we were doing, and we had people coming here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And would it be your belief that Bossier Parish took what we did and said, "We want that," except now they just have a brand-new... They have a modernized facility?
I don't think it's just Bossier. I think it's all over, because everybody now, and knowing that Bessie, as well as L D O E, has finally put in the accountability formula, high school components for workforce development. So, now, schools are... Can be rewarded for having students go down that pathway.
Okay. And my point on this one is, is that Caddo has been, or was, the role model that paved the way for the bulk of that. And I'm just going to go ahead and tell, Gail Flowers was incredible, and did what she did.
We actually had the state in here a couple of weeks ago, and on the second floor, met the individual who was leading the state workforce development. And she said, "Mr. Burton, we are looking at what you all are doing with the internships, because that now is going to be a state model."
Okay.
So, what we're trying to do is get back, to your point, of where we used to be, but we're also dealing with a building that was built in 1956.
That is correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can imagine how we're trying to catch up around robotics, health, medical fields, automotive, so on and so forth, in a building that was built for a high school, to be a high school, in 1956.
Okay. Well, and the reason I'm asking these questions is, I just believe that the public needs to know the historical background, and how hard we've tried. I believe, and I don't remember the amount, it was Mr. Little that brought the motion forward for us to put money aside. What was the dollar amount that's out?
Forty million dollars.
Forty million dollars of reserves that we had have already been allocated to do this. So, we're almost there. Okay? Okay. Without borrowing any money...
And our goal will be not to have to borrow any money or go to the voters in order to construct this.
And bring us out of the caveman age, as far as the facilities that we use. Well, the... Again, I'm asking this and having these comments, because I believe that this is also going to be on consent. I wouldn't have the opportunity to either speak or ask questions later.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Ms. Tremell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, there is a school currently in that building, and we've heard all about what we're doing with Caddo Career. What are we going to do with the virtual program? Where will it be located? When are we going to make sure these parents and staff call in, asking you, asking us, what are we going to do about the students that are there? Can I get just a little feed?
Sure. There's kind of one sitting next to you that I've heard from.
Oh, yeah.
Well, first of all, families would not have to move this year.
Right.
I mean, we know that we would give this school... We will bring a recommendation. If I had to guess right now, we are under discussions with LSU Shreveport to be able to have our students from CBA be at LSU Shreveport and participate through their virtual academy there. We have talked to the chancellor. We have talked to the dean. We've talked to the provost. And again, it's been initial conversations, but they are very excited about the possibility of CBA being on the LSU S campus.
Okay.
As, again, a temporary, you know, that would allow us to move them to be able to build this facility, and then, of course, this board could decide where permanently they want CBA to be located, if not back there.
If not back in the building, we're building.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, well, it sounds good, but I don't know how that's going to work together. You know, because when you start talking about two entities on a campus, but it should work good. Virtual, in that building. We'll see. I don't have to worry about that now. Let me ask one. With our negotiation with the chamber, they're looking... I mean... they're looking... I mean, the possibility is in the square?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just asking. I just want to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you finished, Ms. Tramell? Okay, thank you, Ms. Tramell. Dr. Vincent?
And I will... Thank you, Madam President. And our, I guess, preliminary discussions, do we know how much we're going to have to pay for the current property building and whatever with the chamber?
Right now, from my understanding, and I'm not the one heading those up, but I think we are asking, or staff is asking, for the right to negotiate this formally. So the negotiations have just begun with the board's approval tonight, or the negotiations will begin. So with that, no, sir, I could not give you a definite amount right now. I think we would make... We've had some informal discussions with Louisiana Tech for that property. But I don't believe any formal proposal has been made. I think upon board's approval tonight, that proposal, formal proposal, would be made to Louisiana Tech and then open negotiations, see where it goes from there.
And Dr. Vincent, you all would approve the final proposal?
Right, so we don't have a wriggly feel, what we even going in, thinking from appraisal standpoint? No? And the answer may be no.
You keep that pretty tight to your chest when you're entering negotiations.
Well, it's going to be now... Wait a minute. I got you, but the appraisal, they're not going to give it to us now. Listen, whatever the appraisal is, but okay.
They won't now.
Well, maybe you'll tell me after the... Maybe you'll tell me after the meeting. They're watching just as everybody else is, man. So maybe you'll tell me after the meeting or something.
We'll see what we can come up with.
Okay, with the process of the design, because I know this is 50 million, and I know versus Donnie Bilcom, will the board have any, you know, with the renderings, drawings, things like that? Because I know, I think the cutoff was 12 million, you said that...
On larger projects, and that was, you know, some years ago that that standard was set, certainly the cost of construction has gone up. Possibly the board wants to look at leaving that the same, possibly they'd want to increase it. But I would think this project is going to exceed that dollar amount.
For sure.
Whatever it would be. And then, as I understand it, proposals from people, from firms are made, and those proposals are brought to the board, you know, their idea of what the new campus would look like. And the board certainly has the right to select that individual. So I think we would probably look at a number of three proposals being brought to the board or a committee of the board for recommendation and see what the committee or the whole board likes and make sure that we have a scope developed that would encompass what the needs for this new campus would be, not only for now, but 10, 15, 20 years in the future. If any of us have the ability to predict where technology is going to be 20 years in the future.
Yes, sir. Well, I... Thank you so much. Yeah, Mr. White, I couldn't get that... I wanted to say Smith. Steve White, Steve White.
I answered anything.
I would like to say I'm in complete support... Well, it's not time, so... Well, I'm going to go ahead because I know it'll hit consent, hopefully. I'm in complete support. I think I've said publicly, I know that 50 to 7 million, 70 million is a big gas for us. But when you go around the nation, you see, especially in Texas, things are being built. Cranes are happening there, and I think it's very important for Cato to do the same. So thank you to the administration for going ahead and moving on. And again, I know the public is hearing that 70 million dollars and kind of tightening up, but it's just time. So thank you so very much.
Yes, sir.
I think that's everybody. Ms. Bell, go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Okay, and I like the idea because the question that the question is right now is that we know that workforce development is the nation, it's happening all over the world. And I like the fact, Mr. Burton, in your presentation, I'm still... The only thing that my concern and always been will every child that desire from high school on be able to come to this career center. And I mean, I'm going to finish that I'm going to... Because right now with all what we're going to build, which is great, I mean, we need to extend it, and I'm glad it's in the area of District 12 because they are building, and I mean, they got a lot of industry out there. But what I want to know is that if every child, well, any child that's in high school will be exposed to go to the career center? Not just the school children with the 2.5, the children with the 3 point, the children with the... I want that child that is baby, that baby that's in special needs, not really special, but a special need child that's autistic, may be able to go and deal a career. I just want to know if it's going to be open with the block schedule, will it be open to every child that wants to go and take a course at the career center?
Yes, ma'am.
As always, because I've always, it's always... I mean, I just feel that, and I'm not knocking anybody. And you got these students that going, we know they're going to college. But then they might be holding a spot from somebody who may not be able to go. So I just want to make sure that it's going to be done, that every school, I know every school is going to be... And they're coming from everywhere, right, except the one in north up there because they have one up there already.
And we're addressing all of those reasons why kids aren't participating now because there's no, as you, you know, there's no grade point requirement. We have students who are students with exceptionalities there now. They can go there now. But we've looked at awareness, and so now, based on many of you who have asked, can't every middle school student go and tour the career center? So we're doing that this year. It's mandatory. They don't have a choice. Everybody's going. Second thing, we've addressed the schedule issue and your approval of the block schedule. And the third challenge we're going to have is staffing because my goal is going to be, we've got so many kids wanting to go, we're going to struggle with finding instructors. So we've already begun partnership conversations with Dr. Spillers, Northwest Louisiana Technical College. I had lunch last Friday with Dr. Gant at Sussla. I mean, we are building all of those expansion partnerships now so we can be prepared when that happens.
Okay, one more thing. And I know that when we asked how much it costs, and when you said the 40 million dollars, I know people, oh, that's... The people don't understand, that's 40 million dollars, but it's not the money for a raise. Because when you spend it 40 million, you can't keep a raise going. A raise, I like for people to understand, a raise is continue, not just two or three years. So that's what I'm saying, that 40 million is something that we said that we would build that building with, right?
That is my understanding, yes, ma'am.
And plus, you got some more, I mean, it's going to be more, I'm sure.
It would come from the funds that were already set aside for construction of facilities.
Just like the auditorium at One Hill, okay. I just want to make sure because sometimes, oh, they got 40 million dollars, we can do a raise. No, you can't do a raise with that because it ain't going to be from now on. Then that's another thing. Okay, I'm through.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bell.
You're welcome.
Ms. Yates? You're on.
I think this is for Mr. Burton. The staff that is currently with CBA students at the school, would they move over if they moved to LSU US? They would move there?
Yes, ma'am, and we've also had conversations with the principal. He's well aware, we will include him in all of the conversations with Louisiana. Once LSU US says that this is a possibility, then we will certainly ensure that they're touring the site, that they're aware of student areas. They will have offices there. They'll also have common areas where our students can go. So once that happens, we will make sure that there's conversations there.
So I know currently, like for lunch, the food comes from Huntington over to CBA? Would the kids go and eat on campus at LSU US?
We're not to that level of answer yet. But again, once we get over the initial hurdle of that is a possibility, then we'll go into the details and we'll present all of that to you all, so you'll know.
And do you think this is for the 26, 27 school year?
When do you feel the CBA students would have to be out? If this was approved, we were able, at the earliest, Mr. White, what do you think?
I'm not even sure the students would have to get out. We're still looking at how this would happen. As you know, as we have built wings at schools that we're currently on, we did not move the student body. We fenced off the area that we are working in, and possibly the same thing could be done here. If you're looking for a hard date, I think it's a little bit premature. I mean, we're still talking about getting permission to start negotiations for the property. Once the property is acquired, then we can start working on concept of what needs to be involved here. I think we are a minimum of a year away in design before you could even really tie down what you're going to put there and start getting processes out for bid. It's going to be an arduous task. But, I mean, think about what we've done. We've done classroom wings for everything. Now we're talking about the whole myriad and nothing that would go into this is going to be a standard classroom wing. There are going to be facilities that are more for medical, more for AI, more for... It's not just a standard 768-square-foot classroom, double-loaded corridor, let's build it going down the road. So I think we're going to have to spend more time in design on this to get it right, particularly to get the flexibility that Mr. Burton said he's looking for. He doesn't want a structure that as needs change in a career center that we've got a building that's outdated. He wants something that we could be able to easily flip and handle what the needs will be in the future, 10, 15, 20 years down the road.
And I get it, you know, the questions may be premature, but I also have a senior that will... Well, a child that will be a senior next school year there. And I also have one that will be a sophomore next school year at CBA. So, I mean, as a parent and as a board member, I want to know these answers to me.
It would be something that I could certainly sit down with Mr. Burton and staff and say, here is a plan that we could enclose currently the parking and the drives of the current CBA.
But I'll just say, though, but if we could move them in a location which would be even more enriching and provide that, and it's even regardless of construction or not, we may bring that to you.
No, I think LSU US is great.
But we will always bring it to you and let you have, and let you understand. But as far as your senior, I don't think you have to worry about that. And we will have plenty of time this spring to bring you plans of what will happen for the fall of 2026.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question, probably not in your scope, Mr... And I was fixing to say, Mr. Smith, you've got me. Mr. White, not in your scope. So, and it's kind of to hit on what Dr. Vincent said. The Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, which is what we call the Shreveport Chamber, right? And the others, who is it? Not just them? Who is the others?
Well, it's the Greater Shreveport Chamber, but I think Mr. Abrams or... The, if you look at your packet, the area that's outlined in yellow is what is owned by Louisiana Tech. And then the area adjacent, what we are wanting to make sure is we have ingress and egress in all areas possible. And so because of that, the chamber owns...
Oh, I got you.
The chamber owns this corner lot, and... But we've not verified that through deed or anything else. And so we're interested in that lot, and so we're wanting to be able to have...
To go talk to them.
Yes.
Well, let me say this because I do know that the city, they're building therein now. I think they've made some great arrangements with the city to have that. And since I feel we're a government entity, maybe since the city's giving them some breaks on some things, maybe they can give us the same kind of breaks.
Here, here.
Yeah, so I would pinpoint some of that. I mean, and I've learned that through watching city council meetings. So just, that'd be something that I would remind them of. You know, sometimes when good things come to you, you need to be nice to somebody else. Now we're down to, see, I don't see anyone else on 6.07. Now we're down to 6.08. Mr. Rochelle?
Again, for a historical basis, for people to have the background on this, the, well, the public may not, they may look at this, we've sold, we're selling 15 acres for $13,000. That's... So I would, I believe, I'd like, if somebody from staff or yourself give a little bit of background on this of how long this property's been there and it hasn't sold or anything?
Mr. Green?
It's on, Mr. Burton. This property has been closed or out of service, if you will, for every bit of 40-plus years.
Forty-plus years, okay?
It's been listed. I took this position in 2020, and we listed it a few months after that. And all of that time, we've only had one other, what we would consider to be significant level of interest, where somebody actually had the capital to purchase the property or acquire the property. And it fell through. The person had a change of heart late in that stages of sealing the deal, if you will. But, so this offer here, originally appraised for $69,700. And, you know, you get to a point where you ultimately want to, I guess, basically move on properties, get properties off the books, especially if they're not serving us any purpose. And right now, it's basically just sitting there. So as you are aware, we would retain mineral rights if a sale actually goes through and we close on it. But the amount that was offered, again, is something for you guys to consider. From our standpoint, we don't see anything, or guess what, folks are not beating the door down trying to obtain this property.
And so then it's going to go back into the private sector and is actually going to generate, at this value, it's not going to be much, but it will generate some local revenue for every governmental body.
That's potentially true.
For property taxes, so, okay. It's a shame we didn't sell it 40 years ago. We would have more than gotten... We'd have made up all of that. Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted that information to be out there.
Thank you so much for your questions, Mr. Rochelle. I don't see anyone else, so we're now down to 6.09? Any questions on 6.09? Okay, 6.10. Okay, Ms. McLean?
Thank you. I somehow managed to break my computer over here, so I don't have any information in front of me? Okay. I've gotten a few concerns from retirees about the Medicare Advantage Plan. Ms. Hooper, I sent you a few emails, and I think that you were able to get back to everybody pretty quickly, so I appreciate that. Now, I would like to make it as clear as possible. This is not like the Medicare Advantage Plans that we see offered on TV that put people in a bind. This is a federally subsidized program. Can you kind of elaborate on that? I know this is kind of repetitive, but I know that we have some of those retirees here. And it sounds too good to be, it does not sound like, it sounds like there's a catch.
Right. A lot of the private, the ones that are retirees get a lot of calls for, those are the Medicare Advantage Plans that kind of give the other plans a bad name. So the first difference is this is a group Medicare Advantage Plan. The second difference is this is a Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana Medicare Advantage Plan. So when you hear about strict networks, we don't, this isn't open access PPO. The in-network and out-of-network benefits are identical. So you don't have to worry about being able to see your doctor if your doctor accepts Medicaid, this, I mean, I'm sorry, Medicare, then this plan covers Medicare. So that's one of the figures.
So if an employee is on, is on just the regular PPO plan, would they still be able to use those providers in that network? It's not going to change at all?
Correct.
So they will not be kicked out of their specialist's office that they have been seeing with their existing school board, Blue Cross Blue Shield plan?
Correct.
And that's a guarantee?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have, I think I responded to one of the emails today. I know we've had cancer patients that are on it. I found out today, we had somebody on the Medicare Advantage Plan that received a heart transplant. He didn't have any issues with denials or having to go to different specialists. I don't wanna give too much information. I know he was taken care of in Houston. So I'm not saying that's the same with every Medicare Advantage Plan, but Blue Cross came in, they sold this plan to us. It's been two years, and they have stood by every single thing they say.
Okay, can you, I don't, I don't know that I saw it in this document that is on Board Docs. What's the difference in the premiums? So if they're gonna move from, maybe it's like an employee-and-spouse plan, just a regular PPO or something? What if they, when they move to the Medicare Advantage, what's the change in premium?
So for the employee-only premium, their premium goes down to $25 a month.
From what?
I think it's around $128.
Okay.
And that's before the 7% increase. I don't have those rates. Employee spouse, I really don't wanna guess on that one.
Okay.
But it's a significant...
So it's a decrease?
Raise in their retirement check. It is the best plan we offer. I know that's very, very hard to believe because it seems to be too true, I mean, too good to be true. But the reason is, is the federal funding that comes into these plans. And also, these plans are able to negotiate rates. So I'm sure a lot of people have seen Medicare's negotiating a cheaper rate for GLP-1. Our group plans don't have access to those prices. Only Medicare has access to those prices. So they're able to get more for their money, not only because federal money's involved, but the actual cost of what they are having done is less because Medicare is a larger group, and they can negotiate a more competitive cost.
And if the federal funding for this were to dry up tomorrow, what happens?
Then we would have to go back to the self-funded plans.
So then they would just be moved back?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay. What is the catch?
There really isn't a catch. I can kind of explain the way it works a little bit because the money doesn't make sense. So Medicare, their actuaries, they determine how much, for somebody that's on Medicare, how much are we gonna pay for this person a year? They take that money, they give it to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana and say, "Hey, this is the amount we're gonna pay. How much can you do with this amount?" And they're able to do more with that amount. There's a lot of levels of bureaucracy that a smaller company like Blue Cross Blue Shield doesn't have to deal with. In addition, if they can improve health for our retirees, say you lower the A1C, you're improving their hypertension, something like that, the federal government then gives bonuses to those Medicare Advantage Plans. So the reason it seems too good to be true is because the federal money involved.
Okay, and then if we were to switch everyone over, and then we're just flooded with problems, which, I mean, we do have over 600 employees. I have, I think I've gotten one, and I think it was resolved, actually. So we could come together as a board, if there's a serious problem, and we could change to put retirees back on the plan, even though it would not be cost-effective?
Right, we're gonna continue to review these plans. I think Mr. Burton put out an FAQ. This is not a forever, cannot change. This is a year-to-year discussion, just like every other insurance discussion that we've had. And we will continue to listen to retiree feedback.
Okay, but we have a lower premium, lower deductible...
So raising their retirement check, which is a big deal for a lot of our retirees.
Okay, and then they will be in the exact same network as their current...
There's really not a network, but they don't have to switch doctors.
Okay.
There is no network. If you accept Medicare, you accept this plan.
Okay, and do, do all the doctors that take our current plan accept Medicare? I don't know how that works.
Most doctors that accept Medicare.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Certainly with retirees.
Okay.
And would you also speak to the survey done with all the retirees that had been on the plan at least a year?
Mr. Lubbock, I'm sorry, lady on the front row, you'll have to be quiet. You got a lady who can't hear next to her, first of all, and she's speaking out loud, and this is disruptive.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, for addressing that.
You still can't hear me? Okay, I apologize. Okay, closer to the mic, can everybody hear me? So we only surveyed those who had been on the plan at least a year because otherwise, you're just gonna get their feedback on, "Wow, this premium's a lot less, and my retirement check has gone up." So we wanted people who had had some experience on the plan, and it was a 97% approval rate.
And we did not select just some. We went to all that had been on the plan for over a year.
Yes, sir.
Contacted every one of them. And every retiree that we talked to, 97% of all of them said it was a solid plan.
Right, and I think we have some testimonials in the back with the handouts as well.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I had several questions, but I think a lot of them have been knocked out, so that kind of reduces my list a little bit. How many, so this program has been in place for at least a year now. And when it became an option, how many retirees voluntarily moved over to this program?
It was in between 200 and 300.
200 and 300 out of a total number of...
We have 6,000 retirees, but not all of them are eligible. So right now, we have 2,800 or so that haven't come over, and 600 that have.
So in clinical terms, this would be a low-powered survey because it's a smaller amount. There might be a selection bias because you have people that are already informed about it who've made that decision to go over. I'm curious, how long is the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield?
It's annual.
It's annual, so if, to Ms. McLean's point, if we engage in this, and somehow our satisfaction rates go from 97 to below 50%, we can retool, although it may be more expensive, but we can retool. Or at least leave that as an option for those who are satisfied. Is there a possibility of having a higher-funded, higher-premium option now? Or is this sort of a winner-take-all system where we have, just because you have economy of scale, you have to migrate everybody into this program to ensure those contractual savings? Does that make sense?
It doesn't ensure the contractual savings, but that is how we receive the full savings amount that we have quoted, is to migrate everybody over. It also adds complexity because right now, we know who qualifies for the plan. They're already on Blue Cross, so we migrate them over to the new plan. If we offer choices, which I don't think the choices are attractive, then we have to do a full enrollment.
Okay.
Which just adds complexity.
But for everyone that moves, I mean, if it's a board decision, I guess there's not options. But when people are migrated into this plan, can they still add supplemental insurance on top of it? If they are resourced, or they might have a spouse who has access to other insurance, and they can have a coordination of care, coordination of benefit? So it is truly a winner-take-all. Which leads to my next question, and this is a concern. I think I know the answer, but sometimes in healthcare, I can tell you from the pharmaceutical industry, when a medicine is launched, you want covered lives. So they'll price dump to have people recruit into a program. After you have covered lives, then you negotiate price. You go to the PBMs and you say, "Look, we have, you know, 200,000 people on this medicine. Don't you want to cover it?" And it's almost a lost leader. So my concern is, we enter into this program, and the savings look great. We've got all these people covered. But incrementally, year after year, and I know, I know healthcare prices increase because, I mean, mine have too. More than 7.5% per year. But once they monopolize it, and once they have this huge tranche of enrollees, what prevents them from ramping up the prices to where it's now worse than what we initially had?
Financially worse, is what you mean?
Financially worse.
That is something that we're keeping our eye on because we're aiming towards sustainability. So if we're having constant increases in the Medicare Advantage, just like we're having constant increases in the other plan, then that's not gonna be sustainable. So that's something we watch and we shop.
And so we, but we do have control over that. I mean, once, I just don't want to assign all of our retirees over to this program, and suddenly they're taken advantage of by a system that continues to dial it, like boiling a frog. So we do have safety measures, and we review this on a quarterly basis. Cost containment, we're looking at satisfaction rates. Okay. Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was the case. And then I had another question, but I'll turn the floor back over to some colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Dr. Vincent? You, well, you were, okay, you got off. Mr. Mel?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Now, I've listened to quite a few of the people speak. I am a board member with one check that come into my household. I'm not happy about increase. Don't get me wrong, but I do understand what's happening in the school system. I don't qualify. I'm just wondering, you know, every now and then, when I do look at a check stub, I pay into Medicare, but I can't get it. Can they give me my money back?
I'll have to, that would be a takeaway. I'm not, not sure, but I can sure, I can get back with you on that.
Okay, okay, with the, I'm glad I asked that. Now, since you, I know exactly what I have to pay every month.
I'm sorry, I'm writing down your question. I'm gonna forget it.
Yeah, write it down. I know exactly what I have to pay every month to live in my household. I don't try to exceed or do whatever I want to do because there are a lot of things I can't do because that's it, you know? And I understand, from listening to the people in the audience, what they're saying about the one check come in, one check goes out. But the checks usually go out faster than they come in. This is a situation I know that a lot of people are speaking of. If we run into a situation, and I think it's been explained well, that we're gonna work to make sure we take care of the uss, the ones that can't do it. We have some board members on here that retired, and I think we're sitting next to each other. We don't qualify for whatever it is that we're doing. So we have to stick with paying the most expensive, you know, PPO or POS or whoever. But what is... Okay, but see, we can't be as fortunate as Ms. Bell. I'm gonna give me a husband, or I told you that. So you won't have to be worried about that. And we'll be able to take care of it. But it's not a joking matter. We do have a situation that we need to make sure we're taking care of the people that are employed, who've retired, though. This was the question. If I'm 56 years old, you know that's what I mean. If I'm 56 years old and I retire, I would not be qualified, be able to qualify for this, and you would have to allow me to be on the regular plan, right?
Right.
Okay, so I think that's something we need to make sure that the people that are young, and they've worked 30 and 33 years, that they will be taken care of with insurance plan. And I think it will make them feel a little bit better because I had two to call, and they sure understood their age, and they're getting ready to get out of here, and it worked.
Yeah.
30 years, so they're ready to go.
Right.
So we're good with, we're good with them.
Well, they need to be 65 to qualify. Right, so they'd be on the same plans as, and paying the same rate as they did as an employee.
Okay, 'cause it's a lot. Okay, I got you, I got you. Thank you. Okay, yeah. All right.
Dr. Dezard?
Thank you, Madam Acting President. I too agree with Mary. I just discussed it, and I had been inquiring the many years I've been looking at when we used to have check stubs. So that's a lot of retroactive, we'd be trying to come back. Because, but the good thing, unlike Mary, I worked three jobs, most of my years in cattle. And so I qualify for other entities. Thank you.
All righty, I don't see anyone else on the board. Thank you, Ms. Hooper.
Thank you.
We're now down to 6.11. Consideration to approve revision CPS policy IDF, education of students with exceptionalities. Dr. Vincent?
This is Mr. Abrams. This is, I see it was because of the Louisiana legislative, or the Louisiana Legislature, that we're having to do this?
Actually, we changed this policy in January last year, no, this year. The legislature was very active, and you can tell they changed it a whole lot. And this all came directly from the legislature. And it's basically dealing with seclusion and restraint. And that's what everything in here is directly out of there. It's paragraphs, some of the paragraphs are moved around, but I went through and checked it, make sure it was exactly what the legislature had. And that's what it has, and this is directly from there, from it, and what they, the changes that they made. And it goes into effect December 1.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
All righty, so now I'm gonna go back through each agenda item. If you'd like to put it on consent, please. Please tell me. 4.01, consent. 4.02, consent. 5.01, non-consent. 6.01, consent, non-consent. 6.0... 6.02, non-consent. 6.03, consent. 6.04, consent. 6.05, consent. 6.06, consent. 6.07, consent. 6.08, consent. 6.09, non-consent. 6.10, non. 6.11. Okay, so I'm gonna go back one... Mr. Abrams, do we have to listen to, do we have to go in executive session for 9.01?
Not if everyone's in agreement.
We don't have to do this, it's not even today. It'll be next meeting, wouldn't it?
No, no, that's...
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I forgot it's two. Okay, it's on 9.01, does everybody agree it's on consent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go back through and read. 4.01 is on consent. 4.02 is on consent. 5.01, not on consent. 6.01, not on, well, on consent. 6.02, not on consent. 6.03, consent. 6.04, consent. 6.05, consent. 6.06, consent. 6.07, consent. 6.08, consent. 6.09, not on consent. 6.10, not on consent. 6.11 on consent, and 9.01 on consent. I'll take a motion at this time for the, from the executive.
Move to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda for the November 18, 2025, Kappa Power School Board Meeting as presented.
Mr. Mel?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote, by, by the, say yea or nay first?
Yea.
Yeah. All righty. All in favor, yea. Any opposed? All righty, none opposed. All righty. Now you can electronically vote at this time. Please show the vote.
Mr. Mel hasn't been able to get in yet.
Okay. Okay. That leads us down to adjournment.
Move to adjourn the November 18, 2025, Kappa Power School Board Executive Committee Work Session.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Yea.
Yea.
All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're going to take a quick recess, so they can get ready for the next board meeting, which is our regular board meeting.